You ready? Y'all ready? Public hearing called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrow.
Here.
Councilman Steny.
Here.
Councilman Hackmaker.
Here.
Councilman Farr.
Here.
Here. Public hearing today is on two ordinances. Ordinance number 648. This is amending the CMC Title VIII slash alcoholic beverages. So anyone here would like to speak on that? The next ordinance is 649. This is the rezoning of the R1, R2, and B2 to P1 Aspire Park at Yarnell Road and Clinch Avenue and Carden Road. Anyone here to discuss this? Here a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Aye.
Public hearing is adjourned. Regular meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrow.
Here.
Councilman Steny.
Here.
Councilman Hackmaker.
Here.
Councilman Farr.
Here.
Here. Do I hear a motion of the approval of the agenda?
So move, second.
Having a motion of second and further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. The prayer this evening will be given by Dr. McBride. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for the ability to be here tonight to serve you and to serve our city. I pray God for wisdom as we make decisions. I thank you for the blessings upon this city. I thank you for each employee that works each day. Father, I pray that you watch over and protect them. Be with us the rest of the meeting. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jim. Here a motion for the review and the approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated December 18th, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Having a motion of second and further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. At this time, we'll recognize any visitors or citizens that would like to share their grievances or their praise. Can you please give us a name and address, please?
Roberta Cattene. We have the shop at 350 Market and we live in Knoxville at 1844 Vicious View Lane. As y'all know, we're in the new year and our organization, the historic downtown Clinton Merchants Association, are hoping we can be, we'll be able to work with the city this year in our upcoming events that we have planned. The first one will be on the 14th, which is our Irish Stroll and Cookie Crawl. That was a big hit back at Christmas time and so we're going to extend that just for that day and evening. We're going to have food trucks and special sales in the shops and all kinds of Irish things that day. And we hope that our calendar is already on the schedule, on our schedule, and it is full from March through the end of the year. And we draw from many areas and we hope this is an opportunity to show off our town. And we already have calls from our regular, some of our regular customers wanting to know what we're going to be doing this year since our Friday nights were big hits and the other activities we had planned. And we had a lot of compliments on our, on Market Street at Christmas with the Christmas trees and all the decorations that we had up. And we were just wondering if the city will be able to help us next year, or this year, with some of the decor that we have.
I guess specifically we probably need, you talking for Christmas or just for general?
Mm-hmm.
Well, really, Roberta, about, you know, the, what we do up there now, there's very little more that we can do because of the light poles. You can only have so much electricity pulling on because of...
Now, we use the light poles.
Right.
And it was approval from CUB that we did that.
And that's about the maximum load. Plus, you have to have a wind load on what you put on the pole. And that's why the reefs were designed at that size. So it really just depends on, you know, what else and what all you want to do.
Well, it was, it was an expense to each of the trees that went up from the shop owners and from our organization. But they primarily came from shop owners and we got, I went to get a refund at CUB and got a compliment there. He come, the gentleman I talked with, his daughter has dance class and he said he just thought the city had done a good job on decorating the street. And I said, no, that came from us. So I was just wondering if we could get any help because we don't ask for, we pay for all the fall decorations and everything else.
Well, but I think that all businesses pay for their decorations. I mean, I don't know, but I mean, I put the Christmas tree up on top of my drugstore and I mean, I bought that tree. I mean, I don't know, I think the city can do things personally, this is me speaking, and I guess you're addressing council. So I mean, I think it comes to a point in time when the decorations is the responsibility of the, of the store owner. I mean, I had to put my own up.
Well, yeah, we decorate our tr, we decorate our shops. We do all that.
Well, I decorate outside, too.
But this is on the street for the city to, I mean, the citizens of this area to see. And we did, we got a lot of compliments because we don't have the park anymore to decorate. So, you know, it's, I know that we, we get very little money from the city.
I don't get any.
The, I think, I think we need to be proactive this year because, you know, the, the park was, had other uses for it and it kind of caught us off-guard a little bit. So I think, I think planning earlier and see what we can do. And I've got some ideas. I mean, just, just from a, just from a, I don't have too many ideas, don't get me wrong. But even using as far as the trees and stuff, maybe place them more, maybe, as, as long as we have, still have the planters in there, maybe, I don't know what's in those right now, but maybe put some trees in the planters and make it more. Just leave them in there for the year. I know we're looking at doing something behind the, in the parking area, in the corner of it, and make that more of a, a park area. But that's not going to do anything for, for the downtown area. So I think, I think we still need to readdress that.
And there's some things, but, you know, once again, I'll just caution, the only electricity that we have on the street comes off the light poles and they'll only pull so much of a load. That's where we, I think, I met with Greg and we decided two or three strands of LEDs for the lights they put up there was about the max because we already had the reefs on them, where we had the lights on the poles and that they're on the street lighting circuit. So, you know, we gotta, you know, step back and look at what, where we can get power if we do it.
Yeah. And it's, you know, I don't want to invest too much money on those things like that because, you know, the, the vision and the re, redoing, you know, the phase two's going to be Market Street. So I think we can address those issues that we're having today to solve, you know, at that time. But I think in the meantime, we need to look at some different solutions we can do, so...
But I do think our downtown area is a draw and probably, Gail can attest, our sales tax revenues are up, are they not, a little bit?
Are you talking about for that particular area?
Yes.
I'd have to look at that. I normally do, don't pinpoint.
But, you know, all the storefronts are full, so we're, with the exception of one, I think, or two. And so we're, we're drawing people in. That's what gets us in. I think Mr. McBride probably has returned customers because he's been there for so long. But, you know, would people want to come and walk the area? And it, and it is a draw. If y'all would come down and see what our customers say, they love it. So just another little helpful hint would help.
Thank you. Well, I would reach out, you know, I don't know, my, my, just two cents, you probably don't need to address the council in future on that, but I would just contact Roger and JB can get involved and, and have a plan.
Okay.
You can come to council anytime. I'm not saying don't come, but I say that, but just directly talk to him, he'll get, you know, he's, he's, he's good about getting with you guys. Thank you.
Bobby, you want to talk? Were you just walking by and wanted to sit down for a little while? I was still see you everybody, eight years. Good to see you, buddy. Yeah, I'm glad you're doing well. Yeah? Which, which seat did you used to sit in? Zax? ET's? Well, we got it, we got a good one to replace you. I'll tell you, good to see you, buddy. Anything else?
Real quick, Mayor, I, I think that that's something that we can talk about later. I mean, it's January and I know it's never too early to make requests, but without further specifics and workable things, but I mean, I, I think that I'm supportive of doing something in Market Street because I think it's beneficial to the overall brand of the town because it's downtown. I know that there's dissenting voices on council about that and that's perfectly fine. I mean, we're not all here to agree on everything. But I think as, maybe get into the budget cycle and get into maybe summertime, we could talk a little bit more as we know what Market Street's going to look like closer to that time period. That's, that's all I'd say about that.
Okay. Leaving on, the 2018-2019 audit report presentation from Pew and Company. We're under investigation?
I know.
Now, I will say that, I will say the best presentation I've heard for my audit findings was about 10 minutes long. All right? But 10 minutes would be great.
You got to read this tonight?
Thank you.
I'm not looking for any more certificates.
Good evening. I'm Ted Hoats with Pew CPAs and I'm here to present the audit report for the fiscal year ended June 30th of 2019, which has been also filed with the state appropriately as required and also I know filed for the, with the GFOA as we seek that certificate again. I'm going to first go over the, the audit letter, which is, well, basically the bound document, the, excuse me, the staple document, which have roughly 10 pages. This is what's called a governance letter and it's required communication directly from the audit firm to a board, a governing board, in this case, city council. And let's see, the first page, but it's really the fourth sheet in, is, starts two pages of required communications. What's important about this letter is that it, it really is kind of a summary of information and it refers you to other documents as, as applicable. For instance, if we issued other reports for one, for one reason or another, then we would have to include a reference that see the other report. Or if we had internal control comments, we need to say where, where to find them because whether it's in the bound document, which is typical for a governmental entity, or for a commercial entity, because this, this letter's required for a commercial entity as well, it'd be maybe a separately, about, separate letter. But anyway, it describes required communications, which includes our responsibilities in regards to the audit, overview of plan, scope, and timing. And basically, I'm, I'm going over the areas that are on the left-hand side here. Accounting policies and practices. It makes reference also to Exhibit A, which is summary of significant accounting estimates. Not all numbers are hard and dry. Sometimes they're, they're based off of estimates and I'll talk about that in a moment. On the second page discusses audit adjustments. There weren't any, which is commending your, your, your accounting staff and Gail. No uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements. And on down the road, no, well, referenced that if there were significant deficiencies and material weaknesses in internal control, they'd be referenced in the report. And I'll talk about that in a moment, but there weren't any. And any other material written communications at the bottom, there is a representation letter that management's required to sign and, and provide to us. So a copy of that is attached to this letter so you know what management has represented to us as auditors. On page three goes over the significant accounting estimates. In this case, it's depreciation because that's, that's an estimate, it's based on a calculation, but it's an estimate. And then, in particularly, your net pension and, and OPEB response liabilities, which, which definitely are estimates, they're, they're calculated with the aid of the actuary. So, in, in summary, that's what's in this letter. The rep letter is attached as well. So I'm going to move on. If there are no questions, I'm going to move on to the audit report itself. And basically, in a few pages, it's actually page number, regular number eight is the audit report, which last, goes two pages. And on the second page of that, or page nine, in our, it basically is the opinion page and, and this is your clean opinion report, which is what the city wants, is clean opinion report. And that's the key thing to take out of the two pages that are in the audit report, opinion page. Well, actually, it's three pages, but the second page, the opinion section is what to look for. And again, that's, that's clean opinion. Skipping ahead to page 22, this is your balance sheet, or as it's called in the governmental arena, statement of net position. The key column here is the governmental activities. And this analysis is off of a full accrual basis. Now, keep in mind, you budget off of a budgetary basis or modified accrual as opposed to full accrual. But this, these page, few pages that were, statement of net position, a statement of changes, or statement of activities on page 24, which I'll get to in a moment. These are asked if the city were, books were done on a full accrual basis, which means fixed assets and long-term debt and OPEB liabilities or pension liabilities are put on, on the balance sheet as well and reflected in the income statement. So from a full accrual standpoint, the governmental activities is what you need to follow. The city has $34 million of assets, cash being 11.4, some receivables in there. Your fixed assets are roughly about 13, 12, 13 million. So this, this is where your assets are on a full accrual basis. And follow the governmental activities only because as part of this, what's called Gasmey Statement 34, combining everything on a full accrual basis, it also includes component units or blended units and, and the business type activities. It's predominantly the CUB activity, so not controlled by the city. Liabilities are on page 23, which will show the, the debt and the governmental activities as well. And net position is roughly 15.7 million from governmental act, from a governmental activity standpoint at the bottom there. On page 24 is your statement of activities. And really what I want to point out on a full accrual basis, the third to last number on the page is a change in net position. So that's basically your excess of revenues over expenses was about 3.8 million and from a positive standpoint on a full accrual basis. Yeah, I'm sorry. On page 24. Okay. Yeah, okay. In the first column for governmental activities, and I should have said that, too, the third to last number, they are the 3,880,389. That's your net change in act, in net position or excess of revenues over expenses in the governmental activities based on a full accrual basis. Of course, this is not your budgetary basis, but it's, but it's good information to, to follow and, and obviously your, your bonding agencies take a close look at this. Now, as you move forward to page 25, this is your balance sheet and, and pages forward will be on your fund basis or your modified accrual or, or your budgetary basis. What's, what I want to point out on page 25 is that your, in the general fund column, the very last number before your, your last subtotal, the unassigned fund balance was 4,507,084. Health check number would be to compare your total fund balance at the end of the year that's unassigned to your total expenditures plus your transfers out. So that's basically what you typically need to fund out of the general fund during the year and compare your, your unassigned fund balance to that. Well, if you take your 4.5 million as a percentage of your total expenditures and transfer out, it's 33% or basically a four-month reserve. So that, that's, that's a healthy position to be in for your general fund. On page 27, your general fund for the year, total revenues less expenses with transfers in and out. The net change in fund position had a deficit of 200,000, 205,000. Not, not alarming considering the fact that you're still at a 33% reserve level. So break even about for the year or just a slight excess expenditures. And your, your second column there is your general purpose school funds. They had a positive surplus for the year of 663,000. Fund balance end of the year was 4.3 million. Pages 29 and 30 give you a summary of your original budget, final budget, actual, and variances for first, the general fund and then for the general purpose school fund. So those are two good schedules to take a look at as you have a little more time. And of course, we did talk about the, the general fund had a slight deficit for the year, but through budget amendments, the final budget number, the net change or budgeted deficit was 1.5 million. So you still were within, all, all the excess expenses for the year were budgeted. General purpose school funds on page 30, positive numbers there. Page 31 starts your proprietary funds, but that's, this is really just bringing in numbers from CUB for the most part, plus the Port Authority. So I'm going to go ahead and skip forward to, to page 127. I'll pass through the footnotes. The footnotes will include a lot of information about policies, narrative descriptions, tables for your assets and liabilities and pension information. But page 127 shows your, your federal grant activity during the year and page 128 shows your state grant activity for the year. In the 160s would be, is your compliance section. The schedule of findings and question costs is on page 166. And there were, we had no findings for the year for the city, so, so there are no findings to report. If there were findings, we would have a description of the finding in, in the audit report. But again, there, there were none this year. After the first few pages, I went through the report pretty quickly. I, I do know you, you received the report, I believe electronically, probably in early January. If you have any questions, I'll certainly be, be glad to answer them. Now, just overall, city's remains in a, in a solid financial position.
I've got a question.
Yes.
The city's debt.
Yes.
I'm talking about the debt that we, where would I find specifically that number? I mean, I know there's some...
Yes.
Like when we've gone and borrowed...
How about that schedules? If you look at page 132, you'll see a schedule of our debt, principal, and interest just for governmental activities.
Yes.
And that's going to include the city and the schools.
It's going to include the city and...
And the school system.
And you want to follow the ones that are governmental activities because that's what the city controls. Page 132, as Gail said.
Now, that first column is loan agreement, Tennessee municipal bond.
Yeah, so it's, it's actually broke down by each debt issue that we have.
So we have one, two, three, four, five, six different ones.
Those first two are the...
Those are the ones...
Our oldest debt.
Yes. And those are set to mature.
Everything you see there matures in 2026 is the, is the last date. And you can see how much, if you look at the very last column, it'll total both principal and interest. So your total principal outstanding is 8.1 million.
8.1 million is principal and interest.
That's principal.
That's principal alone.
That's principal.
That's principal.
Oh, there's the interest, 1,995.
Yes.
So we are on a schedule, like I've asked many times, but we are still on a schedule that in six years, unless we incur any more debt or refinance any debt, we are on a schedule to be debt-free in six years.
Yes, 2026.
Okay.
But this debt is the, the, the city and the schools.
Right.
Yes.
That's correct.
So it's just that the, with the loan that the schools just received wouldn't be on this report, correct?
Now, keep in mind, though, we retired the debt. We retired the, I think it's the third one over that capital. No, it's probably the last one. That 353,000 principal balance, that's the one we retired for the schools.
That we retired for them.
So that one's gone.
So that one we, but it, it wasn't at the time of this audit, though. So, okay. So in essence, we, we can take that, if we were wanting, we could take that out of here. But then in a few days or weeks when this other one, we're going to put it right back, put another one in place of it. But I think the structure of that debt's going to be to try to marry up to this 2026. I just can't wait for 2026. I just, that's, if, if we can, I mean, that's been my goal.
If I'm reading it right, too, Gail, if, if we were debt-free, we would have a million dollars plus each year that's going towards a debt payment to use for other... Well, it'd be more than that with the interest.
Right. In 2020, we've got about 1.2 scheduled. Now, again, the schools give us...
Some of that.
Some of that back to pay their portion of, of that one bond.
Which ones of these are schools?
Well, the, that second one, that geo-refunding bond, that is split between the city and the school.
City slash...
And then the two energy efficiency loans are strictly the school.
And that's the one that's like 0.75% interest or something? Okay.
That, that third capital outlay note, that is the fire truck, yeah, that's the fire truck void.
The one dated 3/8 of 18? That first one, though, is what we took, had to redo to...
Right, that's a taxable.
Get ourselves back in line. And that was the one, big one that, okay.
That was the three and a half million taxable debt.
Okay. That's great.
Any other questions?
I guess I should also point out quickly, I didn't talk about the net pension obligations, but you're in very good shape there with your net pension liability, or in this case, it's an asset regarding the public employee pension plan of TCRS, and that really for the schools. But that, a schedule, that's on page 108 and you're... But that, a schedule, that's on page one oh eight, and you're in a net pension asset there. So that- that's a positive situation as well. Most are in a net pension liability.
Good, thank you. Any- any other questions? Thank you. I'll see you next year.
Thank you.
Gail, I'd like to, I'm joining with the council, thank you and the staff and Roger and department heads for keeping everybody in line. I certainly appreciate that.
It- it's a- it's a clean audit. We really appreciate the strength of your accounting, Gail, and your accounting department. So we- we can actually come in and audit instead of fix the books and then have to audit, so it's appreciated.
Right. Thank you again. Communications from the mayor. I do have some board appointments I need to take care of. Clinton Regional Planning Commission, I'd like to, um, to ex- to, um, see who I have here. I'd like to continue with John Stare on the Clinton Regional Planning Commission, term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And also Richard Sneed, term ending November thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two. Do you hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Under nine-one-one, I had put Tim Beatty on the board and he's just not being able to make it to the meetings. He's just been busy. So I'd like to finish his term out by putting David Queener on the- on the nine-one-one board, term ending July first, two thousand two. Hear a motion for approval?
Come on.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Call David. I said, David, I've got some good news and bad news for you. So the good news is I'm going to put you on nine-one-one. The bad news is it pays just like the other boards and committees you're on, so. Clinton Housing Authority, I'd like to extend with his permission, Scott Ray, to that, term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. On the ACDA Board, Anderson County Industrial Development Board, Richard Dawson, last meeting, yeah, last meeting, he wanted- he wanted to step down and just enjoy retirement, which I certainly appreciate that. I would like to appoint Robert Baird to his, the rest of his term, which would be December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Hear a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And also with Robert, we have a Anderson County Development Corporation. They meet very rarely, but they really ask for a finance person to be on that board. That board pretty much is responsible for buying and- and selling industrial property. And Tim Thompson, let me, we were- we were going to meet, but I didn't have one, anybody in that position. So I'd like to nominate also Robert Baird for that ACDC position with your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. The Anderson County Solid Waste Planning Region Board of Directors, I'd like to reappoint Bill Riggs, term ending October the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. The Clinton Recreation Advisory Board, I'd like to reappoint Alvin Taylor and Jennifer Fletcher, term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. The Elder Citizens Advisory Board, I'd like to reappoint Roger Houck, term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And last but not least, the Beautification Board, I'd like to appoint, reappoint Dudley Bostick, Ann Patton, Jason Brown, Pam Rainey, Councilman Gann, and Molly Farah, term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. If anyone here that's a Clinton citizen that would like to be on boards, I'm looking to you Catherine, to please get involved and if you want to be- get involved, please do. And I'd certainly like, love to put you on some, so. Not to- not to point you out, but I know you're a Clinton resident. So that's all I have. Next, Clinton School Board Report, Kelly Johnson, Director of Schools.
Good evening. I don't know if y'all can see, but did you happen to see Scott Ray's expression when the audit book came? It was like a little-
It was like a Christmas one.
It was like a kid, it was a kid in the candy shop, man. He couldn't wait to get his hands on that audit book. He's so excited to go home and dive into that fun stuff tonight. A couple of updates for Clinton City Schools. Last Thursday, we did a wonderful collaborative event with Clinton High School. But we held our first annual Clinton City Schools Family Fun Night, and so we had five hundred and fifty of our parents and kids bombard the complex at Clinton High School. And we set up lots of fun physical activity, activities for the kids to do and parents could come and participate in those physical activity games with the students. And we showcased, it was kind of a combined effort between Clinton City Schools and Clinton High School just to showcase the good things that Clinton High School has to offer as well. And so we had baseball players and ROTC members and softball players that stayed after in their uniforms to interact with our kids and families. The new football coach stayed and- and interacted with our families. We had several different vendor booths about living healthy lifestyles that were there. And then we gave them a strawberry parfait on the way out the door. And it was just a fun, it was a fun family night. It was one of the best things that we have done and had a great time. So we look forward to doing that again next year. Wanted to let you know that the Education Foundation for Clinton City and Anderson County Schools just got finished awarding their Health and Wellness Grants. So with our Clinton 5K that we do every year, all the proceeds for that are pumped back into both school systems in the form of Health and Wellness Grants. We fared very well in that. We- we were awarded approximately four thousand dollars in different Health and Wellness Grants. But one in particular I want to highlight is that we were awarded a thousand dollar grant to partner with TWRA to begin our first Clinton City Schools archery program. And so this will be, um, this will be a new blaze well-rounded activity that I think we're going to start with just sixth grade since arrows are involved. And so we look forward to getting that started. And Terry Curly, the PE teacher at Clinton Elementary, has agreed to go through. There's a special TWRA certification that you have to get and it's an eight-week, very scripted program from them. So we look forward to partnering with them to add an additional well-rounded activity to our sixth grade students. Then I wanted to do a shout-out to the Clinton Fire Department. Archie and his crew worked to get the- Knox County has a fire prevention truck that visits the schools. And so that truck came to all three of our elementary schools and allowed the students to go in and they do education on fire prevention and fire safety. But they also, with the new truck, had an added component for our older kids where they actually got to sit through a simulation of an earthquake and talk about what they needed to do in the event of an earthquake. And then they climb up to the second story of the firehouse and a pretend fire happens with, it looks like smoke, but it's not real smoke, and then they have to climb out and go down a ladder to practice what they would do and how they would exit a window in the event of a fire. So the kids absolutely loved that and that was completely set up through them, so we appreciate that partnership. Then I wanted to let the people of Clinton know that on February the eighth is going to be a busy night in our city of Clinton. We have the Rotary, Clinton Rotary Club Annual Daddy Daughter Dance at Clinton Middle School. And then the Education Foundation, we've been asked for several years, what can mamas and sons do on that night? So the Education Foundation is going to host a mother-son laser tag event at the Clinton High School gym. And so we have tickets for both of those events available in all three of our schools in the front office for those who haven't gotten their tickets yet. And then wanted you to put on your calendar, February the thirteenth, February thirteenth will be our annual empty bowls night where all of the students have made a pottery bowl. And the teachers as well have made a pottery bowl and we'll be auctioning those off in a silent auction. And this year we partnered with the Anderson County Chamber, and we have about nineteen different organizations and businesses that came in and they have made a bowl to represent their organization or business. They're going to put some goodies inside that bowl and then we're going to auction those off as well. And all those proceeds go to Second Harvest Food Bank, who in turn provides us our backpacks for needy children throughout the year. Are we good?
Somebody needs to leave.
Are we getting ready to evacuate? With that said, I think that was my time, my timer that I need to be done. So any questions about Clinton City Schools?
Any questions for Kelly?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Scott, do you have anything?
Just the financial report. Think you should have it in your packet. Any questions? You don't have to prove it, just-
Accept it.
Any questions for Scott?
Any questions? Five-month period in November, same five months of activity that we kind of incurred last year. We're very consistent. Nothing exciting to report.
When- when are you supposed to break ground?
Hopefully in March.
Depending on the weather.
Guess the only thing I'd add from the audit report is, you know, although we had a six hundred and thirty thousand dollar surplus, let's not expect that every year. This year, I know we've already had some one-time expenditures, you know, for capital projects, so that'll knock that down, but- and I agree with you on the debt, getting the debt off the books. The only thing I propose is, is if we have debt, it's for growth and development. If we're maintaining our current operations, then we should use our fund balance for that, and that's- that's our focus, so. But any questions, I'd be happy to.
What was the, uh, what was the actual bid that was accepted for the expansion?
We haven't bid it out yet. It's going to be tight.
Okay.
Um, it's coming soon, but the architect, in this- this type of a project, we have an architect manage the bid. If it's a reriff or smaller projects, I write the RFP, but since we're dealing with total construction and adding onto a building, we need to let the architect do that for the technical writing.
Who's the architect? Were you?
Uh, Miller. M A, uh-
McCarty?
McCarty, Holspis and McCarty.
If you could, um, share those numbers with us next time, I think it'd just be good to know.
Oh, absolutely. Whenever the bid packet comes in, I'll prepare a summary for everybody and you can see what everybody bid. Hopefully it'll be nice and tight.
Okay. Any questions for Scott? Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report, Councilman Gann.
The Clinton Regional Planning Commission met on Monday, January thirteenth. The Board of Zoning and Appeals had no business. The Regional Planning Commission, interestingly enough, applicant McCarty Holzapple and McCarty requesting site plan review for property located at two ten North X Street, which is the school addition. There were a couple of things that needed to be clarified. They, uh, the planning commission voted to approve the site plan subject to drainage calculations and documentation and site plan certification stamps. So we're moving on with that, subject to getting all the paperwork in place. Second applicant Jane Holt requesting final plat review for property located at Shaw Street and High Street, and that was deferred until next month. And then lastly, applicant Joe Rainey requesting final plat review of property located at three twenty-eight Franklin Place. Property is owned R two M at one. This was an addition to his existing property and it was primarily a changing of property lines due to him adding more property and that was approved.
My understanding is he's a troublemaker.
You need to keep an eye on him.
Oh, and by the way, I might mention both, uh, both boards voted to retain the existing officers, which is John Stare, since he's been appointed.
I'm glad I reappointed him.
Yeah, I know.
Been embarrassed.
We- we- we anticipated that, so.
Yeah. Any questions for Larry?
Also might mention, uh, moving on to other things, and you probably may want to comment on this. A great Martin Luther King Day program this- this year. I think we had more people there than any other time that we've had. It, uh, it is growing and it's certainly something the Green McAdoo takes great pride in and- and a lot of people that, uh, I don't get to see that often. I saw this, uh, this last Monday and it's certainly a- a great thing for the Green McAdoo Cultural Organization.
I agree a hundred percent. Anything else? Do you have any other boards and committees reports on that?
Not yet.
Kind of covered that with Green McAdoo. Thanks, Larry, I appreciate it. Clinton Utilities Board Report, Councilman Farah.
So, uh, last meeting, we went through our audits and everything came back good, clean, healthy reports, both from financials and the CUV pension. Nothing to report there unusual. It was, like I said, it was a clean, clean bill of health there. One thing I would mention that if you see some, what- what you may perceive to be utility work taking place, those are not CUV employees. Those are not Public Works employees. They are-
Comcast.
Comcast or Verizon or someone of that nature. It is my understanding, and I know we've had some citizens here in- in- in attendance that have had problems with them. If you do, please, please call the city, let us know what's going on. And I- and I want to talk to Roger, Roger Wayen. It's my understanding, Tennessee Code annotated allows these individuals to come in and work without, without jointly cooperating with local municipalities.
There's a fifty-eight-page state law that was passed that allows the utilities to come in and upgrade the five G with very little oversight from cities. We did meet with a contractor three weeks ago, three or four weeks ago here to address some of our concerns. One thing we can do is make sure they're following some of the best practices, traffic control, some of that stuff. So we met with them and also met with them about replacing some of the stuff they had- had torn up. So we're- we're working with them and I think it's, we've seen some progress. So yeah, if there's areas, issues, we've had several citizens call. We usually pass them on to Verizon and the contractor.
And- and I think, I think it'd be prudent for- for the folks out there to contact your local representatives at the state level. Because it's just, I think from my personal advantage, being on CUV and city council, this has been one of the most disruptive events that I've- I've witnessed. And it seems that we're- we're- we're almost held hostage, that we can't really do much. And I don't know if the other, go ahead.
I was just going to say, uh, and I will add to that, some of you may have noticed the AT&T big gray boxes on some of the corners. That falls basically under the same thing and all they have to do is notify Planning Commission. We have no control at all over the placement or anything about it other than the fact that they tell us we're going to do it. So with their, you're definitely, you're right, there does need to be some changes made.
Yeah, I, it's, yes, there- there, so we're aware, letting the public know, we're aware of it. We're doing everything we can from- from the utility company and from city staff and, you know, we're all on the same page here. I think our hands are tied though for what we can really do. But please let us know if you have problems, either contact CUV or contact City Hall. That's my report.
Any questions for Zach? Thanks, Zach. Appreciate that. General- General Government Report, Mr. Houck.
Just a couple of things, Mayor. General Government, in accordance with previously approved practices of the council, I respectfully request authorization to file for various grants, grant funds through the state and federal government and other agencies as appropriate as we become aware of these fundings.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. We have received a request from Bobby Cross at three oh six Central Street to abandon an undeveloped portion of- of the West Church Street right-of-way between Oak Street and Pine Street and quickclaim the property to him. The other affected owner at two seventeen Pine Street has relinquished any claim to the right-of-way. This request is consistent with a similar request approved in June of two thousand twelve for the adjacent, adjacent portion undeveloped right-of-way.
Hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? You know, Roger, probably, it's been a number of years ago, probably too long that I want to mention, but, you know, when I first came on board, we had talked about, there's a lot of, um, I want to say right-ofways, but they're more easements throughout town that we really don't need, but if we did need them, we could still get up, you know, get- get access to them.
We just have to look if it affects CUV or power management, some of them mainly.
But my- my point is, I mean, I think, I know that probably the, I'm, well, I guess talking to the codes, I know they're busy right now. But it'd probably be, my two senses, get that back on the radar because I still think, I think back then they-
get that back on the radar, because I still think, I think back then they estimated it being, it'd be several thousand dollars on the tax roll, when we're really not using some of that anymore to take a look at it. And I think a lot, a lot of that's probably in North Clinton area than, than most of the other area. But, but there's still some areas that, that could be addressed and, and turn it over to the people to, they're mown it anyway, and I'm sure they'd like to have a little that section called theirs, and we, we can work on that, so. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Two things that wasn't on my report I want to bring up. One, kind of going back to Roberta's request, when you made the comment or the appointments to the Beautification Committee, a little bit of history, and I was talking to Gail about it today, Mayor Diggs, back probably 20 years ago, created the Beautification Christmas Decoration Committee. I actually served on it with some of our citizens here in town. That was one thing we tasked them to look at, our Christmas decorations. We actually then had some very old ones and bought some new ones in stages, because they're pretty expensive. So it'd be my recommendation is, and I think JB sits on it, let them get the Beautification Committee back together, have the original task of them, and let them look at not just Market, Downtown, South Clinton, Main or Boulevard, all of it.
I agree.
So if you're with that, I'll, I'll take care of that. The second item, not on my report, I talked to the county mayor this morning, and County Commission last Monday night made a motion, I'll just read it here, too. Commissioner White made a motion for County Commission to formally request from the City of Clinton a proposal for the armory to be used as a senior center. It was seconded by Commissioner Scott and a motion carried. So they wanted me to bring that into the attention for some discussion.
Well, let me take the lead on this a little bit, then everybody else, please give us the, the input. But after the, you know, we went through the first process, and for whatever reason, it didn't even get to pass Planning Commission for that to be come, come to a vote. I think there, there was a lot of confusion in, in, on this sheet from, was it Cannon? Studio Four that did the, yeah, Studio Four, that did a repair and replacement estimate on the armory. Well, I think the, the interpretation on that report that it was, you know, it, it, everything needed to be replaced. It wasn't up to code, it wasn't up to standard, and that's, that wasn't the case. That'd be like me going to, I'm thinking about buying Zach's house, and then I want to know what everything's gonna cost to replace it. Cost of a new roof, cost of windows, heating and air, and so on and so forth. So I think everybody went down the wrong, the wrong road with the information they gathered. So after the, the vote and the, the first time, you know, they're looking at the Faith Promise Church, too, which I don't have a problem with either one, but I do believe it'd be a good gesture to offer the armory to be used as a senior center. So I, I like to read the, the letter I typed out to Roger and, and just, then, then we can kind of share. And I'm not saying this is the plan, I want, I want to die at the stake, but, but I do, I, I think we can come up with some offer moving forward to the, to the, for the Anderson County Commission to look at and see if, I mean, if they're, if they, if it's appealing to them. So let me read this. I just want to share my plan for the proposed senior center at the Armory Building. The Studio Four design cost estimates on the building details the cost of the repair and replacement of the building. It is important to note that replacement costs are not an immediate need, but instead the estimated cost to replace when needed. What I recommend is before the senior center moves to the Armory, is for the county to be responsible for pay for the grind and polish of the multipurpose room, which is the old gym. And this was on the list from Studio Four. In order to buff out the seams and the concrete floor, this is the estimated cost of $40,000. So before we move in, to have that fixed. At the same time, the city will, will pay for replacing the doors and windows in the building, which are still single-pane windows, at an estimated cost of $75,000. Also, to renovate the restrooms to be ADA compliant. I feel like these two items are our responsibility, since the windows are the original single-pane windows, and ADA compliance should have been addressed two years ago. That leaves the future replacement of the HVAC in the roof. Like the windows, I don't feel like the county should be responsible for paying, paying 50% of these two items upfront, because they haven't used the building during their, their use. But I do believe they should contribute as they continue to utilize the building as a senior center. My suggestion is to have a sliding cost scale for the county that will span over the first 10 years of use. At year one, the county would pay 5% of the total cost of replacement of both HVAC and the roof, if that happened during that year, and the city would pay 95%. This amount would increase the additional 5% until that percentage is that 50% shared cost at the beginning of year 10. And after year 10, after 10 years on, it will be that 50% share. I think we have a great opportunity to partner with the county for the better good. We have a tenant in the building and have, and to have a partner to help share our costs with capital improvements for the Armory Building. This gesture by the city will not cost any additional dollars to us, underline, because we'll have to make these improvements regardless who our tenant is, especially if we're, we don't have a tenant. Our armory is the best served when it's being used versus being empty. And this is just my opinion, and I welcome ideas of the council.
What were the, the restrooms cost? Is that in here?
That was $50,000. I might not put that in there, it's, it's.
$50, 75.
$50, 75.
In addition to the doors and windows.
Yes. But again, I think.
We need to do that anyways, though, right?
Right.
My, my feel is, is that the county is wanting something a little bit more concrete from us, and that's kind of their request. And, and here's some dates that I've called and talked to the city manager and got. We currently have a contract with Roan State through November 30th of 2022. Now, I understand that the thought process and the verbally, the comment has been made that Roan State will vacate the property once the new building is completed. What's that new building gonna be called again? Decap building. Decap building. But that is supposed to be done May of 2021. So the idea and the conversation has been, when that building's done, we're gonna vacate this property, and then whatever can happen with it, it'd be back, I guess, to the city. And I have some concerns about us talking real specific when we currently have a tenant in, in place until technically November 30th, 2022. Now, what is concerning to me is there was a groundbreaking about 13 months ago for that new building. And it's my understanding they've not, have they turned any dirt at all?
No.
Now, again, is that alarming? Is that something that they can't make happen in the next, what, 15 months, 16 months? I'm sure they possibly could. But I just feel like we are, where there's so many moving parts and so many variables out there, that it's hard for us to enter into any kind of agreement with anybody until we get closer to some of these dates. So that concerns me, number one. Number two is, is based on what I have been told, the majority of these replacements, whether it be a roof or whether it be anything, will most likely need to be replaced within 10 years.
Sure, most of them.
And, and, but the county would not be responsible for paying any of that until everything's already basically taken care of at a 50/50 rate. Now, eight years from now, if something like, or eight years from whenever, 2021, the county would be responsible for 40% and the city 60%. I understand that. But I think that we've got to realize that, number one, and I've been reminded of this by several folks, every dollar that the county gives, a city citizen is giving a dollar also, because we are county residents. So if the county gives a dollar and the city gives 50 cents, then I'm giving a dollar 50. I'm giving on both parts of that. So two things that concern me. Number one, we're way far out. I think if we can get closer to this 2021 date, now I know you don't wait till May, I'm not in real estate, you don't wait till May, probably don't wait till March or April, but we wait a little longer to make sure that, hey, they're gonna keep turning the dirt, or they, they say they're gonna build the building, but that ain't even started. And then two, true, it is fact that the county was not there when the roof has been worn out the last 20 years as a senior center, but the county was there as the schools for a period of time. So I, I'm not sure why we go into this type of a scale or this type of a sharing when basically they're getting rent for free day one. Now, if I was a landlord and I was renting a building to someone, I wouldn't ask them to pay 50% of the HVAC repair three months into my new lease, but at the same time, I probably wouldn't be giving them free lease, I'd be charging them rent. So I, I'm not sure that I agree with this, but the more concerning part is the date. We have a tenant right now who has the building secured until November 30th, 2022. Now, all indications are they're gonna vacate it prior to that date. But we're not, we don't know that. We're not guaranteed that. So I just hate for us to give a whole lot of commitment because, now, if they were to vacate the building 2021 in May, and it looked like in January or February in 2021 that they were gonna vacate it in May, then I think we've got, we, we can talk. I'm, I'm for the senior center. I'm for it being there. But what happens if they do start the construction, but for whatever reason, Roan State comes back to us and says, hey, we told you we was gonna leave May 2021, but they're six months behind, can you give us till November? And the county's been waiting on us all this time, but then we're gonna have to go to the county and give them six extra months. So I just feel like that there's too many moving parts, we're too far out for us to, we don't have the ability to give a lot of concrete information.
Well, let, let me just stress those, and everybody else can jump in on that. As far as, I mean, when we presented, and I've talked to the Roan State people, their expectation is gonna be May of 2021. There's no guarantee it's gonna be ready by then. And the county, in the wording of our agreement, it's not, it's not gonna be a, a, a contract, it's just gonna be, like a better word, memorandum of understanding, that this is what our anticipated time to come in at. I mean, face, it's gonna be another six months, and Roan State's gonna be another six months. I mean, that's just the consequences they're gonna have to realize. I don't think that's gonna happen, you know, the, the bids already went, went out before Christmas. So that's a good sign that things are starting up and picking back up. So I think we need to be very clear when Roger and staff makes up this agreement, that everybody understands who's, what's the responsibility is whose, when to expect to get into the building, what could happen. And I think the people across the street really understand that, too. Now, as far as the rates schedule I put in, that's just something I came up with. You know, I was thinking later on, Roger and I talked today, you know, it might be, I, I don't believe that we, you know, this is my personal feeling, that I don't think we should start day one 50% share. I just think that's asking a lot. But you know what? We can reduce it to five years and do 10% every year and go at that, and go at that rate, you know? And then within that five years, then, then they would pay the same amount versus going out all the way 10 years. So that's a very flexible number, that's very fluid, and that's why, you know, I think we need to have those conversations where everybody feels comfortable with. Now, the cost of the building 25 years ago, I mean, that was, that's kind of under the school umbrella as far as the cost, but I would imagine they had some revenue generating through BEP money and things like that, I mean, some type of financing that would go, would go towards that. But that's just a, I think it's two, a little bit of a two different animals, because the schools are getting some type of funding to pay for that, and really, the, the senior center doesn't have that. So that's, and, and as far as the cost between counties and cities, the taxes, if it's May or June, we're out, they're, they're out, then it's gonna be 100% taxes on us. So if it's a split, it's, I mean, relatively speaking, we're gonna be paying the same from a tax standpoint, taxpayer standpoint, because you're either gonna have 100% coming in as a city, or it's gonna be a 50/50 or some percentage between the city and county. And that's my, that's just my thoughts on that. Is there anyone else?
What exactly is the county act? Can you ask, tell us again what they're asking for at this meeting?
Well, when I talked to is, is Mayor Frank, and of course, that's what y'all told me a couple of months ago to do, and I addressed kind of what our contracts have always been with, with outside bodies, whether it be the county on the football field, which is similar, a little bit different, because we have costs from labor, material, all that, so that's why they do pay, but we have a agreement there that it's 50/50 on capital projects. We have the same agreement right now with Roan State. Now, that 50/50 is not opt-in to dollars. It could be, and we've done this several cases, we've done it with the city schools. We may provide the labor and they may provide the material. Couple of cases has been opposite that. So that was my discussion with Mayor Frank. Once again, my biggest concern is what the Councilman McBride brought up, the, the three-and-a-half-year contract that we still have, and they're even a month rollover if they don't have anywhere to go at that end, that they can rent it for a month at a time. That's my big concern, I just don't know where we're at there.
And the administration from Roan State could change, I think. Now, the current administration could say, if you're done by May, April of 2021, we're gonna leave whenever you're done. But the new administration could come along and could say, well, yeah, we're gonna stay an extra semester, and we're gonna do this extra class, or we're gonna do this. I just feel like that we're so far out. That's my concern. And another question I didn't mention, and I'll, I'll, do we really want a 10-year contract? 10 years is a long time. I'm not saying, I, I'm just saying 10 years is a long time. Do we really want 10? Or if we do something, do we want 5s? I, I don't know. Or fours or something.
Well, this is not, not really a contract, but you're saying.
If, if we were to implement, if we were to go forward, this, this was assuming a 10-year contract. I'm assuming.
Well, I think, I think, I mean, my assumption is, is I don't know how you've done contracts in the past, but I imagine if senior center does come to the Armory, it's gonna be for a very long time unless something happens to the building.
And I think it's a good, I mean, make.
It might be a five-year.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good fit for the senior center to be at the Armory. I'll put that in big, bold letters. I just don't think we're in a position to talk more specifics right now.
Well, I think as long as we have the understanding with the county on that, then I don't, I don't really see an issue with it. But I think we need to seize, we don't have too many opportunities to have a tenant coming into the Armory. I mean, it's, it's gotta be for education or recreation, and typically it's, it's, you know, it's a school. I don't know what other school bodies are gonna want to come back in, in there. The alternative school's not gonna, and they have their own building now, so I don't know what else would fit. So I'm, I'm just trying to.
Clinton City Schools?
Maybe.
He said Clinton City Schools.
What, what, what is the future of Clinton City Schools? And is there, is it conceivable that they could use that building? I don't know.
I mean, I've, I've talked to Burton about that before in the past, but, you know, I think if you, if you look at expanding in any kind that you're looking at major money to do that, so the conversation kind of just stalled.
Well, I, I think.
The only, the only, the way Clinton City Schools would use it is only if you were gonna do some sort of expansion, I would think. And we did that exploratory, and then we decided the time wasn't right for that, so.
Right.
Well, I, I, I think that the problem, first of all, I agree with both Mayor and, and Mr. McBride. The initiative and the spirit to cooperate and work with other governmental entities to solve problems our citizens have is, is good. We should be, particularly if we got an empty building, you need a building. If it's available and if it can work, great. But I think, I don't know, I think with your point, what you're really talking about is, is the issue ripe yet? Because we have commitments to people currently. We have a lot of unknowns, and we have several unknowns. It's hard to really be firm, and it's hard to know how to make an educated opinion about, there's just a lot of moving parts. I mean, the, I do think, though, in, I guess my position is, if this, if we have an empty building, they need a building, we should be able to figure out how to make that work. And I think that's what the mayor's initiative and intentions are. But, you know, the, I think the senior citizen, senior center also has a, their operations, they, they probably want something more concrete, they probably want something now. I don't know that they can wait. I don't know what their situation is. I haven't had discussions with. I guess my, my position is, if it works out, great. If it doesn't, then we need to be moving on to find someone else that could fit the, the criteria.
Well, that's one of the, the things that the commission's gonna have to look at, is if, if they want to wait an extra, you know, 15 months. But, you know, we're just making the offer, and, and hopefully they'll, you know, if they don't pick us, then, then Faith Promise will be a good suit.
Let me just say one thing, Coach Cannon, for your mind. Just a reminder, we, as we've said, we've got a contract with Roan State, so we can't enter into a contract with another body for it. I think it's probably maybe even illegal, I don't know. But I know one, one question was a memorandum of understanding. So, and I've only did very few of those. We actually went and looked up the definition of it. And I don't know, this could be done. I don't know if they'd want to commit to it because pretty much the definition of it, the parties do not, do not imply a legal commitment or in a situation where the party cannot create a legal enforceable agreement. More formally, it's an alternative to a gentleman's agreement or gentleman's handshake. So that's kind of what that memorandum of understanding is. I thought that's kind of interesting. So it's, it's not illegally binding by either parties if we entered into a memorandum of understanding.
And you'd have, you could put in contingencies, contingent upon this and contingent upon that. And if those contingencies aren't met, then there is no obligation to, to commit. I'd also, I think it'd be probably germane to have Gail sort of weigh in on, from a financial side of it, if, if, you know, what, what makes sense from, from finance director, what we commit. Well, I'm not asking you to do that right now, suaspekte. I mean, I'm just-
I guess my, my big concern is the, the fluidity of this situation. We're being asked to make a decision based on what if. You know, we don't, we're not sure when Roan State's going to be out. We're not going to sure when, when they're going to start groundbreaking. And I'd like to have a little bit more concrete idea of what's going on before I say, let's do this. You know, I, I don't like to make decisions based on, well, maybe this, well, maybe that, well, maybe whenever.
That's what Zach said, you know. Sorry, go ahead.
If it's an empty building.
If it's, it's a different thing.
It's an easy, we're lending a hand.
I have no problem with working with them if the circumstances are a little bit more concrete.
Roger, do we have a timeline on when we would do the windows in the restrooms? If there's no-
Well, right now.
We couldn't do it right now, right?
Well, right now, if there was any renovation to be done, capital, Roan State would have to split it fifty-fifty.
And they're not going to do that because they're on their way out, right?
Not have that discussion.
Who knows how long they're going to be there?
Just a little bit of input here. I've met with Gordon Williams, who is the director, I guess, of Roan State. His thinking and what little conversations he's had with Nashville, they found a little bit more rock on that piece of property than anyone's thought was possible. If there's a delay period, it'll be negotiating that, which will, obviously removing rocks will cost a little bit more money. And then state's going to run slow to begin with. His thinking, hopefully they can stay with that date, but probably more so, a little bit more past that date. But Scott, you've done a great job of being, pushing the initiative on this. Even with the Fair Board have discussed this. And we'd rather have somebody in that building instead of having a building stand vacant. Things happen when you don't look at it day in and day out. So that's a good thought there, too. But getting back, I guess, to Mr. McBride, if we're talking about two thousand twenty-one or maybe late in two thousand twenty-one, these numbers are probably going to escalate a little bit. So I'm not sure how realistic we're looking at forty thousand dollars in grinding the floor or the windows or the heating air, so forth and so on. So this will, will change a little bit. Now, this is a good layout and a good plan, and that's what you need to have. Both of these are great. Scott, what you're pushing is excellent. Jim, what you brought up is probably realistic. So I'd probably favor a motion by you on that one there. Just table it till we can come to this point.
But we realize when we tabled this, it won't be an option anymore, more than likely.
It's not an option now.
Not an option now.
No, it's an option-
To discuss.
Have an agreement.
But we have no concrete basis on which to make a decision.
But we can always state the, the fact that the intended vacancy of that building's going to be May of two thousand twenty-one, but, but the wording, it might not happen.
I'd like to buy a new car in three years, but I don't know what's going to happen to mine before they-
That's, that's, I was going to say.
Roger, the memorandum, if I understand you correctly, it's, it's almost meaningless.
It's like me and you-
It's just an agreement.
It's an agreement.
Yeah.
And it's no legal for the county or us, and either party can change their minds. And I, I have not spoken with the county mayor about that. If that was something that they would be even willing to do, so I don't know.
Do we, go ahead.
I'm just saying, why, why can't we just do that and just leave it fairly flat with?
And put the wording in there, you know, the desired date would be this date, but let them know that it might not be.
Exactly, maybe I asked, yes, when you said that, maybe you think so. Could we put that or do we have to put the contract date? Since we have a legal contract.
I mean, I, I mean, I would think that, that you'd have to put the, the legal date that they have to be there. I mean, I intend to leave on such and such date, but I have the right to be here.
November twenty-two.
Correct. And I think that's what, that's the baseline date you'd have to operate off of. I mean, that's your, that's your worst case, well, worst case scenario is they go month to month.
Month to month after that.
And they have every right to do so.
But they're going, they're going month to month now where they're at.
But if we did this, I think the sliding scale-
We're talking about Roan State.
No, we're talking about the Roan State.
I'd like to make a motion if I could, and we can vote it up or vote it down. Can I do that? I'd like to make a motion to table discussions with the county concerning the armory and the senior center until the time becomes ripe. I liked your word. Our overall goal would be to partner with the county if possible. I make that in the form of a motion.
Your motion is second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I would think so, too. I would, I would like to encourage and authorize Roger and the mayor to continue the dialogue with, with the county. I don't think that that conversation should stop just because we've tabled it and they can update us as we have new information. I don't, I think, and with the specific sort of understanding, city council is, is, is wanting to make this happen if it can work, but we're not ready yet to talk specifics until we get more information. And then they can continue the dialogue.
And that's what caused my last sentence. Our overall goal would be to partner with the county if possible. If their need is still there and our building is still there-
We'll talk.
Then we need to talk.
But is everybody comfortable, too, though, with allowing these two gentlemen to continue the conversation?
They've been doing it.
They've been doing it, yeah.
You know, I think that's up to the county. How long are they willing to wait?
Yeah, where's that line at for the county? And that's something I don't know.
You guys keep in mind that, you know, the first time we went through this, three or four months ago, we went, and y'all slapped my hands a little bit because I, I didn't speak that, I was speaking, you know, solely on myself. But, you know, we were in negotiations back then when they voted. And it wasn't any talk about timeframe and all this stuff. We moved along. Now, that, that position's kind of changed. But I'll say this, this is a great opportunity. It's easy opportunity to get a good tenant, to partner, and most importantly, to partner with the county for our seniors. And that's, that's my thought. I feel very strongly, this, this opportunity won't be available unless we, we make, make an offer with a contingency. That building's actually going to be available in May of two thousand twenty-one.
Mr. H, what, what is the mayor, Terry Frank? What is her opinion about the whole thing? What, what does she favor?
That, I really, I mean, we've just talked about the original contract that, that we based it on, or I based it on the other contracts with us. Really, that's been our only discussion.
She's worked, she's working on a financial plan for Faith Promise, is what I understand.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I think she's leaning towards Faith Promise.
Just because of the purchase, then it's worth something, I guess, right?
Well, I don't know what her, all her thoughts are about it, but I think she's, I think she'll do what, whatever the convention wants. But I think, I think she's favoring Faith Promise. Any more discussion? Roll call, please. What is, what is the motion? Just to make sure.
I would like to make a motion to table discussions with the county concerning the armory and the senior center until the time becomes ripe. Our overall goal would be to partner with the county if possible. I'll give you this.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farr?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
No. Motion passes. We saw the finance report.
Oh, I skipped, yeah, finance report, sorry.
Sales tax was a little different this month. Anderson County, as in just Anderson County, in other words, non-city anywhere, had an increase in one month of over two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And we're still trying to figure out what that is. Don't know. I haven't had any luck.
Santa Claus.
And this is November sales. It wasn't even Santa Claus.
So this wasn't Clinton, Wood No Ridge?
It was rural county. So that's concerning from the, obviously, it's good for the schools, but it's concerning that there's an error somewhere. So I'm trying to find out. We don't get a lot of cooperation from the state in getting that kind of-
So if it's, if it's an error, they'll come back and take part of it back?
That's exactly what they'll do.
Okay.
So, which doesn't affect us, but it does affect the schools. So, and, and we look at our, we're starting to look at budgets. So, you know, we'd like to know if that's a trend or if it's just, anyway, so trying to find that out. But the city went up six point six two percent. We're almost six and a half percent up for the year, which is still very good. Revenues and expenditures, like Scott said, we're looking pretty much what we did last year. We've collected over one point five million so far in our property tax. I'll mention that you had in your drop box the comptroller's approval letter for the one million dollar note, which is required before we can close on the note, which we're looking at doing within the next week or so. We will put that money into our First Tennessee account, which will earn the schools a little bit of interest to, to pay on that project as we go along. In regards to the audit, we had the two hundred thousand dollar deficit. I want you to keep in mind, though, that we, we purchased a million dollar fire truck. So we had over almost one point seven million in capital outlay. That's why you see, if you remember, we borrowed the money in the prior fiscal year, the five hundred thousand, held it over and didn't actually pay for the fire truck until after July one of this two thousand nineteen year. So that's why you're seeing the deficit, it's kind of cross, cross time periods. And we spent quite a bit in capital outlay this year. I want to mention the cover. You know, I do the numbers and everything that you see in there, but the cover always takes, I used to spend a day trying to come up with a cover. So I asked Matt, my court clerk, this year, and in about thirty minutes, he sent me back a cover. So I appreciate him. Something that is very hard for me to do, Matt, very quickly. If you're going to look at anything, I suggest you look at the statistical section, which starts on page one thirty-nine. That's the ten-year schedules that we do. So you can see what our fund balance was ten years ago and what it's changed. You can see every year whether we had an increase or a decrease. Most of it's focused strictly on the general fund. There are some numbers for other funds, but mainly the general fund. You'll even see our debt in there. You'll see our property tax levies, a lot of different things, even our assets as they've changed over the ten years, our top taxpayers as well as our top employers. So it's, it's something that lots of times, those are the kind of questions you ask anyway. And so those are some good schedules for you to look at.
Gail, do you have any comments on the top tax, property taxpayers on one forty-nine? Any general comments? It's kind of changed quite a bit.
On the top taxpayers?
Principal property taxpayers, different businesses, page one forty-nine.
And what we try to, what I try to do is, it takes me a little bit of time to figure out, because we have some property owners that own, you know, multiple properties. So we try to look at, and, and even when you look at, for instance, SL Tennessee is our top one right now, that does not include a lot of personal properties that they generate from such things as, I'll use Ford for instance, I can't think of the company, say, Toy Yoga. There's other property taxes that are associated with SL that we don't include. This is strictly SL. It also does not include our, in lieu of tax payments. We look at strictly our property tax roll. But, yeah, you, you do see some changes over the years of some companies, if you've been around Clinton, some companies that were here ten years ago that, that maybe aren't here now. You look at, you know, Food Line, which is gone now. So it's pretty interesting.
Any questions for Gail? Thanks, Gail.
Just two other thing, updates. Magnet Mills, if you noticed, about two weeks ago, the contractor started back and has probably got ninety-five percent of the property cleaned up now, maybe even more than that. This week, I talked to Jason Stokes today. He's staying on them pretty hard. We talked about this week, supposed to rain all week, so we may not see a whole lot of movement, but they've, they've got a lot cleaned up in the last two weeks. The other thing is the Glen Alpine Convenience Center. And I think y'all may have got a correspondence from the county mayor. They've moved to their new site. They're in the process of cleaning up the old site. And her plans is to put that out for bid the first of March. So that should be two old, twenty-five, thirty-year-old issues off our table.
John Hatmaker?
Any questions for Roger? Thanks, Roger. Under second and final readings of ordinances, ordinance number six forty-eight, amending CMC Title Eight slash alcoholic beverages. Your motion for approval?
So moved.
Same.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
No.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farr?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number six forty-eight passes on second and final reading. Ordinance number six forty-nine, rezoning R one, R two, and B two to P one, Spire Park in, off Yarnell Road, Clinch Avenue, and Carden Road. Your motion for approval?
So moved.
Same.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion?